To the agenda, any additions, deletions? Okay, if not, we'll move right along to approval of our minutes from our last meeting, our December fifth, two thousand and twenty four meeting. Uh, would someone like to move those minutes for approval?
Sure.
Thanks, Joel. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Robert, thank you. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, then all in favor of approving the minutes from December fifth as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, we have, I believe, new Tompkins County Administrator present. Welcome. Nice to, uh, nice to meet you virtually, hope to meet you in person at some point, and I'll turn it over to you for a report, County Administration.
I don't have any report today, my first meeting, so happy to be there, one, I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Excellent, thank you, nice to, uh, nice to have you here. Um, item number five on our agenda, we have a number of reports and discussions, uh, the first of which is relatively straightforward. I'm not sure how we pulled this off, but we, uh, voluntold or somehow twisted Caitlin Olson's arm, our supervisor from the Town of Ulysses, into being our Vice Chair uh, for two thousand and twenty five. And so I believe we will need approval, uh, to in- install her in that position, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Caitlin Olson of the Town of Ulysses as TCOG Vice Chair for two thousand and twenty five. Would someone like to move that?
I'll move it as the Chair of the Committee to search out for a candidate for that position.
Excellent, thank you, Joel. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Rod. Uh, any comments or questions? Any questions for Caitlin? Hearing none, then all in favor of Caitlin Olson being Vice Chair of TCOG for two thousand and twenty five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What's that?
I said I was abstaining. Probably against TCOG rules.
Uh, next item we have is a broadband update. Who will be, uh, who will be giving that to us? Nick, here, here he is. Nick, take it away.
Hello, um, thanks, uh, and, uh, yeah, uh, is asked to provide a little update on where we are at the county's efforts, uh, to expand broadband. Um, so, yeah, we, uh, as many of you already know, uh, applied for funding back, uh, last year, uh, in May to the New York State Connect All Office, uh, under their County Partnerships Program. Uh, sent in a request, uh, to, uh, uh, expand service to, uh, homes in seven towns, uh, across the county. All the towns excluding, uh, Dryden and Caroline, which have their own, uh, agreements with the Connect All Office through the municipal infrastructure program. Uh, we, uh, been in touch with that office ever since, uh, responding to repeated requests for information and clarification and updates to our location list. Uh, they have, uh, informed us, uh, that they're, you know, re- they are reviewing uh, our requests and evaluating the cost per location and updated project scope at this point. Uh, so we are staying on top of that and, uh, trying to, uh, make sure that we get a timely as possible response from the state on this funding request. Uh, the current status is that we are applying for, uh, just over eleven point three million dollars. Uh, and which would extend service to, uh, five hundred and fifty-three locations across the county. Uh, this is in partnership with Point Broadband, uh, who would be providing, uh, fiber to the home, uh, service to those locations. So, uh, tha- that's the major update. Uh, in addition, we're continuing to stay engaged with, uh, uh, other state efforts that are happening and, and paying attention to those as they come out. Uh, and, uh, staying, uh, in touch with our, uh, advisors at ECC Technologies as they are monitoring the situation, both the state level and the federal level. Um, so, yeah, happy to answer questions, uh, as I have information that can be helpful.
Yeah, Joel.
Nick, does, um, is anything happening as far as, as a planning for, you know, when? Um, working with Point Broadband so that there's a game plan to, 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 uh, implementation once the funds are available?
Yeah, they, they have, um, you know, they have contractors that they work with for installation, they have agreements with providers for, uh, for the hardware, uh, so really what we're really waiting on is, is a, a, a honest expectation that they can get paid uh, for this. So there's not much, uh, in terms of, uh, other things that can get ready at this point, uh, on our end.
And you have no indication from the state as to, you know, how soon we'll have money to proceed with?
It's, yeah, we don't have a clear indication.
Yeah, Mike.
How much money you had, did you ask for or trying to get?
Uh, we, the current request is eleven point three million dollars.
Will that cover the complete thing, or is that just kind of a startup?
No, that, that's the entire project that was, i- i- that plus the, uh, portion that Point Broadband is, uh, putting in, uh, to the project.
How much are they putting in?
Uh, hold on, uh, based, um, the table I've got here, uh, just over three million dollars.
Thank you.
So that's a, if I did the math correctly, a, a twenty thousand four hundred dollar um, expenditure of, of public money to connect those people who are not currently connected.
That sounds about right, uh, the, the per-location costs, yeah.
Rod?
Uh, did you say five hundred and fifty households?
Yes.
And is there, uh, can you share a map that shows the distribution across different towns?
Uh, I don't have one, uh, presently, uh, available, uh, that I could pull up, you know, ti- right now, but, uh, I can check in with, with Chuck at Point Broadband and see if we can get something that would, would break it down by, by town.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, Joanne.
Does that cover all the dead zones in the county? I know Newfield had quite a few.
Yes, uh, so the intention and the, the expectation with this grant is that, uh, this in combination with the efforts that are going on in, uh, the towns of Dryden and Caroline through the Dryden Fiber Program, uh, uh, would extend broadband, uh, availability to all existing residential addresses in the county. Um, now, that said, you know, if somebody is living in a place where there is no electricity service, uh, that will not be covered. Um, those, there are, you know, potentially locations where, where, you know, folks, uh, will have access and choose not to get it. Uh, you know, assigned to their house because, for instance, if you have a very long driveway, uh, that, uh, expense to run the, the fiber or, or cable, whichever, uh, you, you have, uh, can be prohibitive to, to get to your, your, uh, home location. So, yes, the short answer is the intention here is to get, uh, all locations in the county, the, uh, availability of fiber to their home.
Mike?
What is the cost per foot? Are they expecting to, uh, get to the houses?
I, I don't have that, uh, at my fingertips, the cost per, for, um, but, uh, I can see if we can have that, uh, made available.
Because if it's prohibitive and we have a lot of people, it's too great a distance. So that's why I'm asking how far it, how much it is. And in the rural area, how many feet do they need to get to their house?
The typical rule and, and, uh, that I understand for these, uh, uh, types of situations when you have long driveways is if the, uh, if it needs to be extended beyond five hundred feet, uh, from the, from the edge of the right-of-way, that's when costs, uh, tend to be allocated to the, uh, property owner, uh, rather than the, the broadband ISP who would pick it up.
Could you repeat that? Are you saying the first five hundred feet from the street is provided?
Typically, yeah.
Well, that should cover most people, yes, thank you.
Yeah, it, it really does, yeah. Yeah, mo- there, there are very few cases where somebody has a, a driveway that's that long.
Yeah. That's great.
Any other comments or questions for Nick?
Is there something we could do, um, to, to, uh, encourage the Connect All folks to, um, get moving?
Uh, if you know anyone at Connect All, uh, or if you want to get in touch with anybody that you feel like would have influence over their, uh, decision-making, uh, I certainly wouldn't get in your way. Uh, you know, uh, we, I, I don't have any, any specific instruction, but, uh, if you know, Connect All is a division of Empire State Development. Um, so I'd say, anyone you know and it's involved in working with them, you know, encourage them to, uh, you know, try to, try to, uh, come to a, a, a timely decision on this, on this. We'd, we'd like to have this, you know, sorted one way or the other, because if, if we ultimately, you know, we're, we're not successful in this, there are potential other routes we would explore for expanding broadband.
Yeah, Mark.
Uh, I'm sorry to chime in late. Hi, Nick, um, I, I, I'm just, um, and I think I might have missed it, but, um, um, what's the, have, has the state said why, why this decision's taking so long?
In so many words, no. Uh, you know, they have repeatedly sent back requests for clarification and, and uh, con- confirmation of the address list, uh, so there has been a fair amount of attention to the actual locations we've provided and, uh, focusing those in, uh, to make sure that, uh, there's no duplication of efforts. Uh, the state's awarded other grants in the, in the interim since the, between the time when we submitted our application and now, uh, and, uh, so part of this has been carving out those locations where those, uh, awards have, uh, taken place. Uh, a- and, yeah, I mean, it, other than that, no, there hasn't been any, any clear indication as to, you know, why this has taken as many months as it has.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Tim.
Yeah, um, does anyone, I doubt anyone does, but does anyone have any idea whether the state already has these funds deposited on hand? Because if you're following the new executive orders, um, Trump declared a freeze for three months on all Biden infrastructure and ARPA funding.
This, I just, uh, to, uh, clarify, uh, and I can, I can send over the, the grant guidelines that went out, uh, uh, my, our understanding is this is not federal money, this was a, a, a state, uh, money that was, uh, fees, uh, levied on uh, telecoms, uh, by the state, uh, that had been allocated. So I don't think, as, as far as I know, uh, federal policy will influence the funding availability, uh, at this point. It may influence other decisions that are going on within the state relating to this, but the funds, I, I believe, as far as we know, are, are available. And also one other point, and sort of to, to Mark's question, uh, earlier, we also don't know of any other counties that applied for this that have been awarded funds either. So as far as we know, all counties that applied for this, you know, the handful that were in the mix are still waiting as well, so i- it's cold comfort, but we're not alone.
Yeah, Mark, again.
Um, it's, I, it just makes me wonder, Nick, if, if, if they're, they're thinking, uh, you know, they're rethinking the, the game plan at a higher level. If, I don't know.
Possible.
Yeah, okay. Right. Thank you. That's very reassuring about the, uh, MIP funding, um. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Joel, go ahead.
Does, the, the, the ones who did get the money, uh, do you know, Nick, whether or not they had, uh, a, a lesser cost per location in their proposals?
So, nobody through the County Partnership Program, to our knowledge, has been awarded money. Th- there were other programs the state ran, the, um, Municipal Infrastructure Program funds, uh, which, uh, for instance, the towns of, of Dryden and Caroline were successful in, in obtaining. Um, and I don't, I, but I, you know, to answer your question, I don't know their cost per location and then how, uh, how it broke down. According to what we're talking to, you know, and what we gather from conversations with ECC, the cost per location we're looking at is not, uh, out of the realm of reasonability for what we would expect at this point. Uh, and it does seem high, but the, the reality is these are some of the most difficult to access locations. Uh, that's the reason the private sector has not built to them.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Comments or questions for Nick?
Hi, Nick. Are you, is it MIP or, uh, B?
This is, this is a, a program the county, or is the, the state announced called County Partnerships. Uh, so it came out just after MIP. Um, and, uh, it's not the BEAD funding, the BEAD funding is the federal. Uh, that's the, that's, uh, to Tim's question, uh, potentially where that funding is, is going to get tied up.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else? Last chance to ask Nick questions. All right, well, thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Warren. Have a good day.
Uh, let's see, next we have, I believe Darby is here to give us an update on the county's building code study.
Gordon, passing it from one side of the office to the other. Uh, here I am, um, appreciate the opportunity to provide some updates on the impli- implementation of the building code study that was completed last year. I did provide a link to the study, uh, it's on packet page eight for those who are who are online and want to look at, take a look at that. Uh, but it's also a reminder that while the county administered the study, many of the actions that are identified are for the local governments to advance. Uh, so I'll go through what the six strategies are and then provide some updates that I've heard from my colleagues and, uh, some of your staff on, on what's been going on. So, like I said, there are six main strategies, uh, in the document or in the study. One was about nine-one-one addressing. Uh, the second one related to building code software. The third was on recruiting and staffing. Uh, fourth was, uh, shared court services. The fifth one was on specialized services and, and technical assistance. And then the, the final main strategy was on municipal to municipal shared staffing. And the study also included a number of alternative, um, strategies and, you know, many other possibilities of, of opportunities for shared services or, uh, coordination. So regarding the nine-one-one addressing, I know that many of you work with Catty Anne Campbell and our, uh, County GIS staff. And so she works to help check the assigned addresses from the, from the municipalities. I know that different municipalities do it different ways, and so that's kind of been the challenge is, um, you know, how to have a uniform system. And, um, so in order for the county to have, to become the addressing authority, uh, memorandum of understanding would be needed. So if anyone wants to work on drafting that and, and ushering that through the approval process through all the municipalities and the county, uh, Kim Moore at our Information Technology Services and, and Michael Stitley at, uh, Department of Emergency Response would be, would be happy to work with anyone interested in, in pursuing moving that along.
Hey, Darby, can I just interject for a minute? So, um, I did talk to Mike earlier today, Mike Stitley, um, and I can't remember when we talked about this before. I thought there was general interest, but, you know, he reminded me that every municipality would have to agree to move forward. So I, I can't remember, was there a municipality or two that was reluctant to move forward with the county taking over nine-one-one addressing?
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think there's also been some staffing issues at the county level to even just think about taking that on. Um, but yeah, I mean, if, uh, I don't know if that's a, a pole to, to do. I know we, we talked about, no offense to the city, but not including, you know, the city at this point, but all the, the remaining. Um, so, yeah, I mean, if anyone has example MOUs, uh, that would be helpful, um, to consider that we could start drafting something off of that. I know I did talk to, to Marty Mosley about it a while back, um. And so, you know, that, that would be needing that and, and championing that on, and I think Rod, yeah, we talked about that many, many months ago about ushering that through. So we can bring that back up again, um, and just see if there's reluctance to move that, but, um, yeah, you guys think about that and see if that's, uh, there are any issues there.
Thanks, Darby.
Yeah, thanks, Rod. Uh, so another one on the building permit software. I know some of the municipalities, Town of Ithaca, Town of, uh, Lansing and, and City of Ithaca, all have gone with one vendor, but we had a bunch of demonstrations from software vendors, uh, both the beginning of two thousand and twenty-four and then actually right towards the end of the year, we had another one, uh, that was of interest from the Town of Dryden. And I know a few municipalities have gone with cloud permit, maybe, uh, Dambi and Caroline, but I don't think there have been any coordinated joint contracts, so I'm not sure, especially with some of the municipalities that maybe don't have any software that they're paying for. Um, I do know that Dryden was interested in, um, in looking into a new software package. So if anyone else is interested, let me know, I can give you contacts for any of the vendors. I think we had at least four or five, uh, demonstrations already. So the, um, recruiting and staffing, I did meet with our, uh, human resources staff and, you know, that it's, it's a tricky situation for them. I mean, they can't, um, they can't make changes to any of your, uh, job descriptions, but if anybody wants help making those changes, they're willing to do that. They can assist with any of those job changes. I mean, what we noticed in the, during the study process was that there are many different job descriptions and, and they're kind of close, but, um, you know, some of them have more responsibilities. Sorry to keep picking on Town of Ithaca, but, you know, they all are electrical inspectors as well, so that makes their job descriptions very different than mostly the other municipalities that work with a third-party electrician. Um, and so if, I know some of you have had some turnover, uh, of code enforcement officers in the last couple of years, and if you are looking to just update, um, your job descriptions, I know HR is, is very willing to, to help with that. Um, you know, just trying to take, I think there were at least eleven very distinct, um, job descriptions, that it's hard to kind of pull that into even one or two. So, um, that, that would be an effort, uh, to get everyone's agreement on that. Uh, and then I also met with our, uh, the county's Director of Workforce Development, Chris Spawn. I met with him a, a couple of months ago, and they are interested in helping with, uh, developing recruitment materials. So I have a meeting set up with, um, with him and Marty Mosley, uh, to just talk about some, some efforts that have been done in the past and, and how to, uh, position the, the type of job of code enforcement officer, uh, in different, uh, job fairs and, and different, um, opportunities that they see out there. So that's, that's ongoing, um. And then I just want to bring up a, many other things that Marty Mosley gave me an update on, because he's been coordinating the, uh, an annual meeting of the code enforcement officers, and that was held just a couple of weeks ago, uh, and they had a presentation from a representative from International Code Council talking about contractor licensing, and that was something that was brought up during the study of, um, just so that there's some accountability for contractors and whether that's a registration or a licensing, uh, so that, that's something that everyone's aware that this is a, a contractor that is, um, has the right insurances and other requirements. Um, so it's not clear how a program like that could be implemented, other than, um, as Marty suggested, someone at the county, uh, may be the best option for, for running that program, uh, so it would just be really a matter of trying to figure out how to, how to fit that in, um, with our existing staffing. And so that could be something to consider in the future. I'm not sure, uh, where that would land, um, but I know that the other point that they made is that some of the individual local laws that you have on the books would need to be amended to accommodate having the contractor licensing, so that could be an issue. In terms of training, I know the, the code study listed training under a number of different categories and, and Marty provided me a list of about thirty trainings that were offered in two thousand and twenty-four that were either hosted by or provided by, um, the Southern Tier Building Officials Association, TBOA, as, as many of you might know, uh, the, how that group exists, um, and they were either in-person or, or live, um, webcasts that were available. So they ranged in, in all sorts of topics from, uh, you know, just fire code and, and different things like that. Um, and then let me think of what else. You mentioned at the, also at the annual meeting the other week, that the group again discussed stormwater management and how to do that as a shared service. This has come up multiple times over the years. Um, many, most of the municipalities in Tompkins County are, uh, regulated MS fours. Uh, this is a mandated, uh, state mandated stormwater program. And so there've been some discussions in the past about an engineer, uh, and some of the municipalities already contract with soil, uh, the Tompkins County Soil Water Conservation District to provide those services. So I think they're going to pick up that idea again. Uh, we have a storm wat- water coalition that will be looking at that. Uh, and then I guess kind of the last thing on the shared services topic is I did review the local government efficiency grant when that was released back in November, uh, to see if there are any strategies that look like they would be eligible for funding. And I didn't really see any good fits, uh, and mostly because the cost-benefit analysis that's required is kind of tricky. You know, I was thinking about like the, the shared software, but if you're not spending any money, you're not going to see any uh, costs or, or any benefits, um, if, you know, you, you're already not spending, if you're spending zero, it's hard to ask for state funding to then start spending more money. So I didn't see any logical connections there. So that, um, I'm, I'm going to move on to a few more topics of interest, um, kind of on my water platform that I, uh, talk about from time to time, just for you guys to be aware, and these do also impact your, your code enforcement officers. Um, the first is there are new state regulations on wetlands, and so there's a new map available. And for any of you who, uh, you're, if you have your own GIS at your municipality, the data can be downloaded from the state, uh, clearinghouse. And, you know, an, an important step that's going to be happening for, especially in the code offices, is that a jurisdictional determination from the state is needed to identify, uh, wetland zone properties. So that's a new step and new process that, um, could be slow, could slow down some projects. So if you're aware of things that are happening, uh, they should be looking towards the state to do those jurisdictional determinations before advancing, uh, work on, um, on a property. So there was one, uh, information session on this last week, and I'm kind of tracking the DEC's website to see if, uh, as they have more sessions and if we want to provide any additional, um, information sessions here locally, but there is a recording of the sessions that, that was held last week. Um, the, some of you might have heard that the EPA approved, uh, the state's total maximum daily load for phosphorus for Cuba Lake. Uh, that sets a reduction target of thirty percent phosphorus. And so the permitted wastewater treatment facilities that have, uh, reductions targeted are the Freeville, which I don't know if I see anyone for Freeville here, and they're aware of that issue. Um, they have a, a sixty-seven percent reduction target. And then also in, in Seneca County, Interlake and has a reduction target. And then the Ithaca Area Wastewater Treatment Facility, there's this kind of different, it's not a load issue, it's a concentration issue. Um, so they'll have a new, uh, limit added to their permit. And so the Water Resources Council is working on, um, or is talking about developing a fact sheet for you guys, for municipalities, to understand like, what does it mean to have a TMDL? What are, what the municipalities should be aware of, um. There's not a lot for municipalities to specifically do, but there's just an awareness that I think we want to, want to bring to the local municipalities. And one more topic, um, is at the end of December, you guys all would have received, uh, some information from FEMA about the floodplain, uh, or the new flood maps, and then that you are uh or the new flood maps, and then that you are required to develop a floodplain development local law. I mean, you you probably already have one. Um, except for Enfield, and so you have to create a new one. And so we actually, uh Abigail Connor and I met with DEC today to talk about having um a virtual meeting uh in the first week of December for you guys to be able to ask questions. Um, and so you know, we we asked them to talk about, talk about the local law, the timeline for adoption, the seeker requirements um to review the optional language that was included in there. Um, so we'll get an invitation out pretty soon. But if you have questions in advance, we can funnel those um through and and send those off to to DEC in advance. So that's that's my report on thirty different topics.
Thanks Darby. Yeah, Mark.
Darby, um, see, we're we're supposed to have that draft done by March twentieth, right?
I think so, yes.
That's what I said. So did you just say that there's going to be you're organizing another meeting that we can attend with DEC on this or?
Yes, yeah, what um we'd so we just met with DEC today and we were trying to finalize a time. Uh, but it'll probably be the first week of February.
Oh, okay.
To uh I um, yeah, I'm not sure what I said. I'm not sure what month I picked, but in 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 about two weeks.
I think you said December.
Okay, well, that was not the right month at all. My apologies. Uh, to just be able to answer questions, because I think uh we heard from Town of Groton had a bunch. Um. So I think if we lay those out and and um catch them early on, I also did ask about uh sometime later closer to when you need it to adopt them, but we can see how people are feeling. Um. If there are yeah, remaining questions after the initial meeting in February.
Yeah, I mean, I I mean, I I haven't looked at it carefully yet, but I'm going to. And I would like to push this to our town attorney as soon as possible. Um, so you know, I would I would advocate for a meeting sooner rather than later.
Yeah, yeah, understood. And I just, and I think it's confusing the um because the there's like a second part of that optional language. And I think, you know, even if you're thinking, oh, yeah, we want to do that. Uh, D- DEC was warning us that there's a lot of enforcement and tracking that might be uh beyond the capacity of a small municipality. So you just might want to think through those optional pieces. Yeah.
Just as uh, i- is this pretty, we we at DEC's um urging, because we had um, I think his name was Dan Fuller, visit us. And so we we revised our our flood uh damage prevention law very recently, I maybe year and a half, two years ago. Is is this pretty similar? Do you know? I haven't.
I I don't know. Yeah, I I I what yours says, but it does, it has to reference the correct maps. And so the version that DEC sent you has the right maps referenced in there. So you might be able to do a a side by side comparison and see what else has changed since then. Yeah.
That's great.
But I mean, mu- many of the other municipalities, they date back to the probably to the eighties.
Yeah.
Or nineties.
Super. I do remember those um optional things that need to be carefully considered. So thank you.
Uh, Caitlin has her virtual hand up.
Um, Darby, in addition to the the thirty topics you already covered, I wondered if the county and and you may pass the the ball to somebody else, but I think it's probably in your wheelhouse um based on my knowledge of your professional background. But um, the the federal government, the EPA had a final ruling on lead and copper. We all had to do our inventories um in October if we had wa- public water systems and and now they have some new final rules that they issued in October, whether or not those last, who knows? Um, but is there um, is there any conversation about yet that you're having with DEC? Or whomever the bright people at the state are about how to handle that and how to start addressing systems that may be deficient?
Yeah, definitely have to to pass this ball to um our environmental health folks, Liz Cameron, Doug Barnes. Um, I know about as much as you just said, that there is a lead and copper rule, but I don't, I don't know the details um of how that's being put pushed out. Yeah.
Um, I'd I'd like to propose that we talk, find out, uh have a conversation with the county or learn from the county. Um. At a meeting in the future of TCOG, because I imagine that there there might be systems in in your communities that may be potentially impacted. Because they're giving us a ten year window to get it all out.
Was that a was that a motion?
Well, I mean, it would be nice to have somebody in. So I I guess I'm like asking Rorden to add it to a future agenda potentially. Um, I think it'd be good to hear. Because I know there's some, not in our town system, but in our town of Ulysses overall, that may be potentially impacted.
Rorden, I can can, I'll start an email with you and the folks at Environmental Health and yeah, relay that request.
Other questions uh for Darby?
Somebody, somebody in the
Okay. Yeah, Bob, go ahead.
Regarding flood maps and flood law changes of the act. I'm from Enfield. We've never had a floodplain in Enfield before now. And so now we can give an email that I opened up a couple of weeks ago saying we've got to have a draft law, which we've written before, because we've never needed it, ready by mid-March. And frankly, last year, when I represented to FEMA, zoomed into a town board meeting, I asked that person at that time, should we start drafting that law now? And he said, no, don't start now because flood maps make a change. Well, we waited and we waited and we waited. And then now the flood maps have been approved. And now there is such a tight deadline for FEMA getting a response from us. And our normal procedure in Enfield is we go through the town planning board, the planning board would write the draft regulations. They would then go to the town board, the town board would review them. I mean, I don't see that how we're going to get anything that's even in draft form ready by mid-March. And I'm kind of surprised that FEMA didn't give us more time since they've sat on this for a good long time. Any solution?
I am not FEMA, so I cannot respond to that. Sorry.
After the frustration of others, Senator. Thank you.
Other comments or questions for Darby? Was that your hand, Mark?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to ask if if we wanted to take an initial poll on the um nine one one addressing that Darby brought up early just right now. Um, or 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 in the future, but I I certainly have an opinion about it. Um, and but if if we decide it's a it's a no-go, then I don't know, would it be worth a straw poll?
Mark. Rorden, I'm wondering if we could put together a little, when we send out the TCOG material for the next meeting in advance, just say a little poll then.
Great.
Yeah, I think that works. And also, Mark, why don't you and you or I, which means in this case probably you, um just shoot, shoot Mike an email ahead of our, ahead of our next meeting and find out what some of the objections he has heard might be. Um, rather than putting uh maybe those objections are dated at this point. Maybe maybe we don't want to put a municipality on the spot. But in any event, I I'm not aware of what those objections could be. I know that we do have he had mentioned in one of our previous conversations, we have roads with similar names across county lines and those kinds of things, which which can cause an issue from a nine one one standpoint, but I'd be just curious to know what he's heard that might potentially make this problematic. And if it's not, then then yeah, straw poll sounds great.
Great. Thanks. That sounds great.
All right, going once, going twice for Darby. All right, thanks Darby. Good to see you.
You too.
Uh, next up we have is Guillermo with us. Uh, we have a discussion or an update on one of cooperative extensions, solar development initiative. So take it away, please.
Um. I think that might be a selling bit. The the was to kind of have a conversation with uh folks around the community. So I've started a conversation with different officials in different towns, um, put officers and such, et cetera. On their concerns that they're seeing around large scale solar development. So to preface it, I've recently started a new role at extension that is supporting farmers and municipal officials on sort of the large scale solar sighting process. Um, there's just a lot of confusion about it and we're just trying to help communities understand these things better. Um, most of these projects anybody hears about really late in the process. So right now, um, we're going to meetings. There's one in Carolina tonight. There is one in Groton next week. Um, basically a couple of few months ago. Uh, and so I'd like to get a sense from this group of municipal officials generally of what your concerns are. And then some, I I can put together some information for you on what you'd like to see. And one of the things we're hearing about in particular is concern around the lost ag land. Um, and these projects tend to go on either active or prime farmland, and that's a concern for local communities. Um. We can talk about those again. My my intention is not to have an opinion about it so much as it's providing information. So if that's a concern, what can we do to maybe support the local life community? And so I guess the proposal, um, which is very early in the conversation stage is the county as an entity in my meaning is uh, and and this is still, I guess, a very early in the conversation stage. Uh, the county may be planning, coordinating a a fund that is set into buying developers that um whenever it goes into any municipality, is collected countywide and then fed that out to ag community members um in any community in the county. Um, and that these, you know, it could be a grant program that is, you know, administered through the county, but reviewed by the ag land, ag and farmland protection board or some similar group um representatives from different towns. So there's a lot of different ways this could look, but what we're seeing is that um, I guess there's three pieces to it. One is that um the county's being IDA titled for solar citing uh for giving pilots is um considering adding an adder to any baseline highlight for solar projects that the developer would have to increase uh the payments for projects on ag land, um active or prime farmland. Um, we're proposing as well as for forest advantage. That's their proposal. We haven't been doing it and we're still kind of working with them on some of the language around it. May or may not pass. It looks like there's a problem. Um, the county might be idea, you have to go through pockets. The county itself, the municipality where the project is happening and the school district, the project is happening. Um, the county can only direct the county's portion of it. They may or may not be interested in directing that portion toward again supporting the ag community. Um, there's also host community benefit agreements aside and in addition to the pilots which anybody can write with the developer. Uh, you know, it's an agreement, they're legal documents if wanted to be. And they're binding, but any community group could write one with the developer if the developer is spoken to it. So these are common with municipality, obviously. Um, and they could be, they are sometimes go for like a you know, supporting park and open space or playground or um something in addition for the school district. Or perhaps something for the fire department or some other emergency services. Um, those are common uses of funds. We're trying to get folks to think about the possibility, if you're interested in also supporting that community, what that look like. Um, so again, just bringing that into the conversation and um if municipalities pursuing these projects early enough to to see if there's some interest in doing something. Developers are interested in, you know, they're sensitive to this. Um, this, I guess, perception that is real of the projects are largely going on on ag land. Um, and then the the other piece I'll add is research that's going on for now and other places in parts of the country are favorable takes. So there's a lot of interest in combining co-signing ag and solar on the same site. And I'm gonna, I think I'm able to provide some sort of a reality check on what we know possible. And then the the reality of like I say, when there's a project going in and it's already been designed and the arrangements are already pretty firm with the developer and a farmer or landlord. It's really hard to modify it for ethical takes at that point. So again, just getting the knowledge out to all of you and anyone else uh that's involved in these projects to kind of understand this. So the the first time you heard about the project, these are some things that if you're, you know, at least knowledgeable about what you might want to bring up, it's up to you to bring it up, but at least, you know, I can provide that information. So that's sort of the background, and I don't know if folks want to open up a conversation now or um again, I'm open to meeting one on one or in any capacity on available group, cooperative extension. I have a card here or also pretty easy to find at GM five two at cordell.edu.
Comments, questions, thoughts, anyone? Yeah, Joe.
Um, one of the things that was talked about in the Energy Committee uh was the um, and it relates to the with the points you made Guillermo about the the tendency to locate on farmland. Um, that seems to be driven more by the proximity of the county's best farmland to the to the existing transmission lines. Um, and the um, and the fact that there's a lot of land that might be better suited in terms of its viability for agriculture that's 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 not adjoining the 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 transmission lines. And what we could do to um address that 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 whole access issue, because as as the regulations currently exist, any developer who chooses to locate in at any distance from a transmission line needs to to pay for the connection to the transmission line. And that rapidly becomes so expensive that it that it that it discourages locations other than right next to them. Um, that's um concern for us in the southern part of the county where we have, where we have perhaps um m- more opportunity for 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 accommodating solar without having such a negative impact on on agricultural productivity. Could but while acknowledging that these agrivolt takes is is an option to to mitigate at least um that that impact. Um, but there's no good way to get to anybody to locate there. Um, we have one solar project in Dambie, and I guess there's one being proposed in Caroline um that are accessing by way of um, you know, the the, not the transmission, but the distribution network. And it was only became apparent when ours was was in process that you can even do that. Um, but it's rather limited in what you can do, and it's only the way you get three phase power run, and that's um not every place. But anyway, I wonder whether there's anything in your uh in your wheelhouse, to use a to currently fashionable word um that would help us address that um, I would call it mild distribution.
Yeah, um, not really. So uh, it's nice saying essentially, and we have access to the utility distribution maps. Um, they're called postal capacity, uh postal capacity maps. Utilities are all required to post them. They're not super accurate, but it gives you a sense of where all the three phase lines are and the total capacity of each line. So like you said, you're going to need generally three phase lines that have some capacity on them. So you can kind of see where this is, and you're right, it's mostly not in the southern area of of the county. I think what we've tried to have conversations with various levels of the county level and um, grew among the the um uh climate and sustainable energy work with the county. So it's kind of an advisory group as well. And we've had conversations of what can the county do to pressure that cert, uh sorry, that said, to take these things into account. So normally when any kind of development goes in, the developer of any project has to put has to put in a plan for how much energy that's going to use, meet with the utility and then have that approved and pay for most of the upgrades it requires. If a municipality had a plan for a development zone or something like that, that sometimes can put, they can influence the utilities sort of two or three or five year plan to global resources towards that area. So if they know ahead of time, what we've tried to do for years and years and years. Go very well is have joint planning between the county municipalities and NICED. And there's, there's just very little interest unfortunately. I think this group, the more people that think that that is or could be an issue. Uh, I think putting the pressure on NICED and, and I'd be happy to coordinate that effort again, um, to consider, like you said, where you know, or you're pretty confident that development's going to go and, and a significant energy demand or input in this case, um, and what that's going to do. The substations and transformers, visualized distribution lines, all of that. They have a plan that gets modified as developments are, are kind of approved. Well, we'd like them to think about it as before they're, let's start thinking a little more with a little more course thing, especially like you say, where there's open land, maybe marginal land. High part land, that landlord research. So I, I think that's you all.
Trouble, I'm having trouble hearing all, all that you're saying here, I don't know if anybody else is having the same issue, but the sound from the legislature seems a little.
Yeah, uh, the more folks that are interested in trying to influence the utility to, to make those decisions and, and plan ahead, I think the better, but my efforts through the county, you're, that didn't really go very far. But I'd be happy to try to re-infiguring those with solar and ag.
Okay, so you're willing to help coordinate that effort?
Looks like we have a couple of hands up in the ledge room, yeah. Whoever, whoever wants to go first, go ahead.
There was a script for Jeeves, um, thought that we're supposed to sign off on and we have no input into it. We're also supposed to follow on, they, oh, they're not, what's a lot on, and we put this in that possible vision. Of, you know, the state is drawing things together and then the state doesn't come up with that.
Yeah, the, the communication between the state, the developer, the municipality needs some work to figure, and the project is, I think you're talking about the larger one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, well, again, I think also we would be willing to. Learn people.
There are all, we got three hours, we got a bunch of, Michael, we got three hours.
So that's one, it's sort of, um.
What, what's, what's, what's the process for in the process?
Yeah, so, yeah, and, uh, I agree with you. I, I think that that needs to get that, like, at the meeting in Groton the next month. I think that's the kind of input that we want to, should be hearing. The other piece is, the slip is, like soil water conservation is involved in that, right? So I think they need to hear it, so anyone who's putting some layers together. And the slip is also being provided usually to, by, by, by the, um, engineering firm, right?
Right, and usually. In this words, we've got a worry, but none of that, you know.
There is none, really.
Now, the state is going to implement it, or they're going to assign it, and we're supposed to sign off on it.
Not yet, I'm, I'm waiting to sign off on it, it's nothing to do with that.
Yeah, it's, it's about to do it down there.
I'm not hearing Joe at all, if anybody else is.
I, I love that, that the script process, uh, short water protection plan, which the state just puts it together and then expects that now to sign off on it and implement.
But it's, you have to talk more about it. Um, but again, on as much input as you can put into the process, ORES was formed a few years ago. Transition over to a different office at the state, but still it's, uh, it works.
Another issue that's come up is we got one, we, we three different, uh, construction projects on, one of which is one of the ORES projects. And there's battery storage and then there's a data center and they're all, they're combined. But all of the work, that all this stuff, that's not what we do as a part that we're supposed to approve. So we're supposed to approve a project or a planning process in which person is outside our scope of discussion. It's, it's a mess.
Yeah, I would agree, especially that one, it sounds.
And having a pool of a planning process or part of the planning is not by somebody else that you, you don't have to talk to you about what's going on.
Yeah, and I, I mean, again, I think that you should, and I don't know how, how they would track down, if you were able to basically say when you received that. Can't sign off on this, these are the issues we have with it. That's how it is.
Where, where we're stuck, we can't always, you know, we got a timeline, we have to follow what the application is, so.
Even sort of bottom.
When y'all will talk it over, it's, it's, it'll be whatever they feel like.
Um, that is one of the issues, I, I think another piece of ORES is the Office of Renewable Watering and Signing. That's the office that is, uh, tasked with approving any projects that are over twenty-five megawatts, that is, you know, basically over twenty, between twenty-four and fifty-five, the developer has the, the choice of sending it to ORES. I would only say that, uh, we don't know exactly why, uh, so if a project is bound to be overly burdensome um, with local regulations, then ORES will override local regulations. That's very general, they don't say what overly burdensome is. Um, and so some of these projects do go back to court quite a lot with the municipality and lawyers and such. Uh, but if you don't have anything in, in writing about solar citing at all or about open space or about protecting ag, or about these things, that doesn't give you anything at all. So it is, it's, the solar setting laws, master plans, um, comprehensive plans and other things. Your natural authorities, just to have these things in place and say, we do care about these things, it's in writing. Uh, because, like I said, if it's not in writing at all, then you have no choice in, in what they, they want to do. But if it's in writing in some way, then you can at least say, look, our community values these things. And, uh, we would like to protect them for these reasons. Now, considering also that the landowners are the ones who are one of these projects in the first place. So, um, being sensitive to who's, yeah, and, and what sort of that's stated, I guess. And it's ultimately, you know, to land on, on good properties, if it's within the balance of being the way. But again, I, I really would love to have a conversation with as many people as possible, like again, what the concerns are and trying to address those concerns really, you know, I think some of these things I have no, no ability to do much on. And I, I, I know some people at ORES and I can, I can task these on, um, but, uh. The more that we say these things, you know, the more that you're, the people, it's more, um, but then the things that we tend money side or trying to protect things for value or trying to move projects to where it makes more sense, those kind of things. Um, that would be not good, that's good.
Yeah, Bob, you had, you had your hand up. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you for coming here today, man, I think we're going to start a good conversation. Um, I'm from Ed Field, we've had some serious solar issues that are rankled members of our town board in recent years. I'd like to think we have a forward-thinking solar law, it's been revised twice since twenty nineteen, but it still doesn't seem to jump. We had a fifteen-megawatt community solar project going in a few years ago. And what the planning board proved was not really what the solar operator revealed. Furthermore, it's on, on pro land, our, our, our solar law now says you're not supposed to put solar panels on prime farmland. You're also supposed to only put solar panels on sixty percent of a development site, so that that needs in theory, that could be left for agriculture. Well, the developer goes and puts a few panels here, a few panels there, leaves a lot of brush line between them, it's not farmable. So that negates the purpose of the law. And we revised our solar law a couple of years ago, so as to even write files ourselves. And we said we should have a host community agreement as part of it. But the lawyer on our town board says, well, not really, because the solar developer can just go down to the county's county industrial development agency and get filed out there. It doesn't technically have that host community here. So there's a lot of frustration on our part. And I think the law needs to be reformed because there is a set, a state incentive, at least with the large industrial solar projects to build them, or local community down. And, um, it really needs some, some work. And so if I'd like you to work for TICAC, me to work with, work with that as possible. To try to develop something that may be a little more farmer-friendly and.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a lawyer and I don't, I don't, I can't really provide, uh, any kind of legal advice or write those documents for you. Uh, I'm happy to review that and provide suggestions for types of things that might be basically, if I want to consider. That's sort of a far off, though. Um, I'm happy, uh, working a little bit with Caroline already, uh, and some folks on different, I, so, in the process, solar law. Um, so yeah, I, I'd be happy to, and it's very hard, and I, again, I'm not a lawyer to make sure that these things are binding in any way. That would be up to you all, um, and you want to make them, yeah, you can sometimes make them overly restrictive by accident. Uh, so it's a balance, um, yeah, because you want to give the landlord some ability to do. You know, you don't want to kind of kill every project that a landlord wants to do. Um, yes, I'd be happy to, to, to do something with those.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions for Guillermo before we move on in the interest of time? Yeah, Don, is that your hand up? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, been my experience in the last four years that they don't care what the local people think or what we regulate or, or what we say about farmland or anything else. The governor, the legislature and ORES and NICERDA are going to do whatever they want. Uh, that's just my take on it.
Okay, thank you, Don, anyone else? All right, Guillermo, I appreciate it. Let's see, I believe Caitlin has to leave early and that's good because she's up next. Cybersecurity Municipal IT Services Committee.
Thank you for that timing, um, so our, um, trusty band of three, um, Rorden, Joel and I, um, met on Tuesday, I think it was. Um, met on Tuesday and, um, so Darby's report was really, um, wonderfully timed in terms of, um, talking about. We, one of the things we talked about was, um, software and what's appropriate for code enforcement. Um, and if there's, there's any synergy and it sounds like based on how far along certain, many communities are, Ulysses is not one of them on adopting software, that there's probably not town, there's probably not county-wide need, but that the county can provide services um, to, to the municipalities who may not have embraced a software approach. And so we can each individually decide what works best for us. So that was one thing that we had been, had, had been percolating. And then, um, what our conversation really focused on, um, was how we can, how municipalities, because we're all coming from such different positions in terms of what our IT and cyber capacities are. And, you know, Ulysses, uh, Truman'sburg, um, Danby have all had to go down the pathway of, um, you know, entering the twenty-first century um, in, in the last couple of years and stand up some sizable amounts of money, at least for our smaller communities, um, in order to do so. And then you of course have the town of Vizca way at the, the end who has a full-time staffer to help, which we're all jealous about. Um, but so what we had a conversation, because we're such a wide range on the spectrum, um, our focus really was on how best can we interact with the county in a way that's not trying to be burdensome or onerous to the county and also beneficial to the municipalities. And what we decided on and which I will follow up on is that we are going to, um, attempt to work with county IT in terms of identifying best practices. And the things that we should be looking for in the future, because it's really hard in a smaller municipality to know what's coming down the pipe and what kinds of issues and processes we should be thinking about to help keep our system secure and safe. Um, and, um, you know, because the county is such a much bigger entity than any of our municipalities. Um, they're thinking of things, I'm sure we thought they would be thinking of things that we've not yet been able to, to comprehend or, or consider doing. And so, um, I think that'll look like a, some kind of, hopefully organize some kind of forum in the future um, where we can have, you know, a more closed, behind closed doors, so we can have a much more robust conversation about maybe, um, some vulnerabilities or things like that. The county did do that, uh, before when Joel was able to attend, it was in a different context than this. Um, but something like that, we thought best practices, um, in particular, would, would, would possibly be useful, um, to other municipalities. So we're going to coordinate with the county and see if we can find a time that works for, works for folks. Did I miss anything, Joel, Rorden?
No, I don't think so. Um, any, any comments or questions for Caitlin? Yeah, Rod.
Just a comment, Caitlin, if you do put together some sort of webinar or panel, I know John Little, who's our IT person, would be more than happy to talk about what the town has been doing. You know, we're really trying to find the balance between, um, being as secure as possible and not spending a lot of money, so you know, you've got to find that even ground. But anyway, John Little, I know would be willing to be a resource.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Mark.
Um, thanks Caitlin, and so you had two topics there, the, the software topic and then the IT security. On the first one, I just. We did just, uh, uh, enter recently a three-year contract with Cloud Permit. Um, we have, you know, we're in the process, slow of getting that in place. The, the, uh, agent we were working with, uh, uh, had a child and, and sort of dropped out for a while, he did pass it along, but anyway, it's sort of, um, it's sort of stalled a bit, but I just wanted to say, I, I would be interested if, if, um, a countywide, um, platform or solution were identified. I, you know, this is a three-year contract and, um, if, if something better was identified or developed, we, we'd be all in on that. So I just wanted to offer that caveat.
That's great, thank you, Mark.
Sure.
Others, any comments or questions for Caitlin? All right, thank you Caitlin, um, next up we have our emergency planning and preparedness some committee, which is chaired by Mark.
Sure, thanks, Rorden, and Rorden and Dan or Dan Lam are both on that committee. So, um, I guess the first, so, um, we've been having our committee meetings centered around uh, the issue that I think Dan Lam mentioned to this group a couple of meetings ago of, um, equitability in terms of service and, um, support or funding of ambulance services countywide. So, um, some municipalities have an ambulance, uh, tax and some don't. Some are served by a private ambulance company and some are, are not. So we've been trying to, um, or we've been grappling with that and, um, thinking about how to address this issue in a more equitable and, and, um, sort of, uh, regional or county-wide basis. Um, and I, I will point out that, uh, Rorden brought this to my attention or our attention on January fourteenth. Um. Uh, the governor did issue a statement that she will, um, introduce legislation defining EMS as, uh, as an essential service uh, and requiring counties to ensure all residents have adequate access to these services. Such legislation will also require counties to develop a county EMS mapping that will allow New York State to identify and fill gaps in coverage coordinated statewide by the state EMS task force, which was established by Governor Hokel in, in twenty twenty-two. So, um, you know, this is. you know, this is um there there are bills in the Assembly and the Senate um already um that advocating for uh EMS as a an essential service. Um and um so it's coming philosophically and it's it's a practical matter um that we've identified. So um yeah, so I guess um we have been thinking about um and um so so um ambulance services provide mutual aid to each other. And so ideally, that works that works well if if mutual aid is reciprocal. Um but it's it's not really happening that way. So some ambulances are providing uh uh more outside service outside their certificate or or their their area of coverage um that they're, than they're receiving um reciprocally. So um one idea that's come up is a uh a countywide um tax to support ambulance services countywide. Um so that's, that's something I I want to mention, um something to think about. And um I think that uh we are going to see um the reality of a a a more regional um comprehensive approach to to provision of EMS services. So with that, I guess um I would ask Rorden if he wants to to follow up with more information about that.
Only only one uh one item to add. So the governor did release her executive budget this week. She did include a whopping $5.2 million in it for this initiative, which looks out to about $90,000 per county. Um it it is a start. It's the first time any governor has included any dollar funding for anything related to ambulance ever. So that is at least an admission that EMS and ambulance is is a a growing need. The key piece, I think, for everyone to be aware of. And I see David Shapiro is on the call. I don't know if he's, if he's can hear me. Um the key piece to this is that if EMS becomes a mandated essential service through which the county has to be the um organizing or overseeing authority. We're going to see some changes. And and quite frankly, the city and the town of Ithaca, um I would encourage them, if they're interested, to engage in this conversation sooner rather than later. Dryden Ambulance, close to 50% of their calls are now out of district, most of those to their south, which is the town and city. Um Village of Truman'sburg, we're at about 15 to 20% of our calls are out of district, most of those going to the city of Ithaca. There was just a call to um to Wegmans that we were called for while we were in this meeting. So if these mutual aid contracts are reimagined or redefined so that we don't have to respond necessarily in that direction, the city and the town are going to uh learn what we have seen over the last couple of years, which is that you really do not have adequate EMS coverage in your areas. Um you don't have your own departments for sure. Uh and and Bangs, for a whole host of reasons, is not able to provide the coverage that you think you're receiving. I'm hopeful that we can kind of have these conversations, maybe more in-depth while whatever's happening in Albany happens. Um but it's very likely, again, I I've never seen a governor looking to address this issue as directly as Governor Hochul is. Um the Senate did pass an essential services bill last year for EMS. The Assembly, it got hung up. I'm assuming because it's an unfunded mandate and many upstate counties don't like that. But this is happening. And if we can get ahead of it as a county, be a little bit more cutting edge, do things before Albany tells us to, I think we will all benefit. Um because the reality is that Dryden and Ulyssus and Truman'sburg taxpayers are subsidizing EMS coverage in the city and town of Ithaca and have been for a couple of years. Um so however this shakes out and however we want to have these conversations is is up to up to you all. The worst case scenario, I will just say from my perspective, having seen seen my fire and EMS department work for 15 hours straight um providing coverage for very large fires, which you're all aware of, and the various EMS responses around that while simultaneously trying to provide coverage to areas like the city of Ithaca, because Bangs didn't have appropriate staffing the other night. My biggest fear, quite frankly, is that if I am forced to say we will not send an ambulance on that next call because we need coverage here uh and someone dies as a result. You know, that's, that's obviously the extreme, but it's also in a particular line of business, very possible. I'd hate to be on the deciding end of something like that. Um and so our efforts at the committee level and and it looks like if this legislation gains any traction, the answer is going to be Tompkins County, you figure it out and you pay for it. And I'm okay with that, except I think it would be more efficient if we if we had a better plan in place uh moving into that. And so with that, if anyone has comments or questions about any of this, or Mark or Dan has just joined us, um or myself.
Yeah, I I I see Dan.
Yeah.
Pop Dan, I, do you want to time in, Dan?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everyone. I I just wrapped up a class, so I rushed over here as soon as I could. Uh but I I would just add that, you know, this is something that um I think we can do and 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 we can show that it's possible here regardless of what's going on in Albany. If it's not this session, it will be in the next session. But each year, this topic gets more uh attention. And you know, we had the co- um the comptroller just this week talking about the shortage of EMS uh and and uh emergency response uh in the state this week and how important that is. And you know, the last thing, Rorden just said, this is something, well, you know, we may have to pay for. Uh the fact of the matter is, some of us are already paying for it. And and that's the issue. I I'm just going to continue to appeal to to um everyone a- about because this is something that um our taxpayers will pay for. Uh and and they obviously do it willingly. Uh you know, we get complaints a lot about, you know, how how we spend money in in town government, uh but we've never had a complaint about our ambulance tax. And we doubled our ambulance tax in 2019. Uh it's now $80 uh dollars for a thousand, 80 cents for a thousand. And and so it's it's a significant amount of money in the town of Dryden. Uh it's it's not a significant amount of money in the other towns, as you know. Uh and it my, um I guess my um petition here is that uh we we can do this countywide. And I'm going to continue to work with um Greg Mezzi and and others on this topic. And it's going to come up to the county uh shortly as as an idea that needs to be uh embraced this year.
Great.
I see a lot of a a lot of applause for an ambulance tax, but believe me, this is something that uh i- is popular. It it may may seem counterintuitive right now, but everybody wants to know when they dial 911 that a legitimate service is going to respond. And and Dryden now ambulance is not going anywhere, but we are writing into their contracts this year that one of their ambulances must stay in the town of Dryden at all times. So there there aren't going to be as many Dryden ambulances running around the county uh this year as there as there were last year. Any questions, comments, Dan Klein?
Yeah, end up in the ledge chambers.
So we discussed this stuff at the December TICAC meeting and based on that, um you know, it was successful, planted into my head. And so I included it in the uh state and county address, which I know is a really small thing, but it was basically a list of what topics I think may be coming to the county budget later in 2025. So this is my attempt to ring the bell a little bit.
Thank you.
Say though is that if nobody here, the job is to study and implement a countywide ambulance tax. So we need some help.
Yeah.
Maybe if people can come up with uh another county that hasn't, even New York State or elsewhere, that what it looks like and some examples of what one might look like, that would help us quite a bit get started on this task. Otherwise, I'm not sure exactly who, when, or how it started.
Great point. And I'll just a- address that there is no other county that's currently directly uh implementing a ambulance tax. I've I've checked with a uh a lawyer on this who who works at the statewide level. Um but I did reach out to him again last week and I'm hoping to have a meeting uh to help to get some input on how this might work in our county. Uh and it's especially helpful to know that our county isn't saying no right off the bat, that you're you're willing to entertain what this might look like. I mean, I'm I'm making no assumptions here. I don't think our committee is making any assumptions, but we're deeply appreciated that you're that you're, you're you're willing to to see what this looks like.
Yeah, Joel, go ahead.
I mean, you you um Mark stated it first and then you reiterated it very clearly, Rorden, that what the, what the state's looking to do is essentially to add a new unfunded mandate. You know, counties, this is the problem. You figure it out and you pay for it. I think it would behoove us to figure out how to do it and how to pay for it. Um you know, rather than wait for the mandate to be expressed, we could provide some leadership on this issue and we're certainly focused on it. So we're, I think, in a good position to to advance that cause. Is that fair?
Go ahead.
Can I just add one thing at the on 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 that point? So I did do some research and there are other states that have passed legislation like this. And say like the state of Iowa uh allows counties to to designate EMS as an essential service and to tax accordingly to raise the funds. It um you might call it an unfunded mandate, um but it's it's what that might be the model New York follows. I don't know. But the point is, you know, counties can, if they hold a referendum and and the voters vote to to uh see EMS as a uh essential service, this is the way the state of Iowa set it up. Then counties can go forward with a county a- ambulance tax to fund EMS and ambulance services. And Iowa has 99 counties and I believe upwards to 22 have held referenda to do this and and have this process in place. And this has only been in the last two years that it's been an option. So there are models out there, municipalities that are doing this successfully and and uh um and they're glad they're doing it.
And one thing I would just add, um I I think it would be very helpful for the county legislators in particular to encourage our state legislators to take this seriously from the funding perspective. So in in the past, uh both Dan and I, we've had conversations with with um Anna Kellis, as well as Senator Hinchi and others. And and the number we've kind of come up with is 500 million. It sounds like a big number, except when you realize that it's two tenths of 1% of the proposed state budget. So out of a $250 billion state budget, if we get to a place where we have several hundred million allocated to counties due to this mandate, now we're talking about six to 10 million dollars to each county to help make sure that EMS is adequately provided. And it's a drop in the bucket for the state, but it's a huge relief and savings on each individual county and the departments therein. So I think with the the thing that that I've heard, and I think Dan has heard over the last couple of years from our state legislators, is that there isn't there isn't a groundswell of support, there isn't an outcry from the individual municipalities and the counties to have the state step into this EMS issue. Um I disputed that and said, well, you know, we're raising our hand, but it sounds like particularly on the, particularly in the Assembly. There are a lot of Assembly members who feel that this isn't a dire issue. Um and so anything we can do to kind of uh push back against that narrative, particularly if the governor is successful in getting this new mandate created, would be very helpful long term. And I'm actually, I'm actually pleased to see that she has a little bit of funding. Because once you once you turn the faucet on to a drip, it can, it can easily become more at the state level. And that's, that's kind of what I'm hoping for. Other, yeah, Joel?
The um how's the issue of private uh companies providing the service um as as opposed to the public support for the service being addressed in 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 the planning for for the big picture?
As far as I can tell, it's it's, well, it's not mentioned in in the governor's proposal. The statewide EMS task force has done their own studies, which basically repeats the same information we've had for years, which is that in population-dense areas, private for-profit agencies can survive and they by virtue of the fact that there is money to be made, they they show up. In less dense population areas, they don't. And we've seen that around, well, we see it with the issues um we have with banks and their staffing, but we also see it to our north, Puga County, um Portland, you know, they've both had um Geneva um a couple of years ago, they've both had private for-profit agencies, which have either left or have struggled because it's it's simply just not profitable when you don't have the population density or the call volume to support their models.
Does a, does a subsidy, uh you know, public subsidy of the private entities, uh you know, c- considered as a as a possible uh extension of service component?
My understanding in the previous conversations over previous legislation is that that is a nonstarter. There there's no, I have not seen any discussion about public subsidization of private entities. And so the only the only um solution is that public money stays public. Which means it either has to go to, you know, individual municipal agencies or or to the counties. And I think what's happened over the last few years, because there's been so much movement on this, is that the the original kind of concept of getting subsidization for all public agencies became too too difficult too difficult to implement. How do you get the dollars to every village of Truman'sburg in New York State? And so by simply saying, well, fund the counties, that's that's that's, the counties then have to figure out what to do with this um additional money if it if it comes to be an amount that's meaningful.
But just to take Joel's point one step further, if we were to go to the model that effectively we have in Dryden right now, where we tax all our property taxpayers, we collect a certain amount of money and we contract with Dryden Ambulance to provide service, the county could do something similar. And they could contract with Bangs Ambulance to cover certain zones of the county. And they could contract with Truman'sburg Ambulance for others or Dryden Ambulance. And we we'd have a much more accurate uh accounting for uh the service provided and uh contracting, you know. What are your uh operational expectations expectations in a contract that could be written in? And you're going to respond to a call within eight minutes and you're going to respond to all calls. And if it, if you don't, uh you know, you'll have, you know, a mutual aid plan with with the other ambulance systems and things like that. Um so instead of a subsidy, it it would be a contract, uh Joel.
It amounts to it to subsidy, but 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 it but it provides an avenue for for ensuring that the service provided everybody who needs it.
And a lot of these costs are, do have a public component in terms of the Medicaid reimbursement that they do receive. There's, it's not like there is any government money involved.
Other comments or questions? Dan and I could talk about this all night, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rod.
Yeah, uh since the town of Ithaca was mentioned, I just want to say we're happy to be part of the discussion.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that. And I, you know, just again, coming up with something sooner is going to be better because, you know, one of the things we're working on with these mutual aid agreements is you know, we don't want to leave our home districts without an ambulance, which is hap- which happens often in Dryden and often in Truman'sburg. So I think the shock comes when mutual aid is not available. We don't want to see that. I mean, it would happen daily in the city of Ithaca, and I don't know that anyone on common council is aware of that. It would happen daily, sometimes multiple times a day, where you would not have an ambulance available to respond to to a call in the city of Ithaca. That seems, that seems outrageous, but it's it's reality today. Um so I I'd like to come to some type of like to figure something out before we actually see what that looks like.
So it sounds like it would behoove the county really to So it sounds like it would behoove the county really to to convene the the parties of interest, which are the, you know, the municipalities that are always doing this and the private companies in in saying how, what would be an equitable way to to ensure that the coverage is countywide? Which is a conversation, I guess it hasn't really happened, has it?
Well, if if Mike Stately at DLR, I think, has done done yeoman's work in in trying to make that conversation happen. The reality is that there choose my words carefully because this is recorded. There has been some reluctance on the part of some to engage in those conversations. And so that's why I think we're 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 at the point of legislation, not collaboration. And I think that having the county legislature begin to take a a leadership role in that is is what's needed. Again, to Dan's point, regardless of what Albany comes up with.
And we're certainly having conversations with our ambulance providers. They they they're making us very aware of what they see as an unfair situation.
Yeah, and and one of them is participating in our committee discussions is very helpful.
Other comments or questions on emergency planning before we move along?
I appreciate the update.
Sure. Energy Subcommittee.
So you may recall that a few years ago, community choice aggregation was kind of a focus of the energy committee. But there was a long pause with the Public Service Center. We actually submitted an application and for about a year and a half, we never heard anything. We finally heard on December twenty fourth that they approved our materials. So we are finally able to move forward on community choice aggregation. We've named it Tompkins Green Energy Network. So we will start now doing education and outreach and all the steps that we need to do. This is the city and the town. So I I know other municipalities were interested, so I'm hoping that come January of next year, we'll be prepared to say, okay, who else is interested in joining joining Tompkins Green Energy Network? But the city and the town have a lot of work to get it up and running this year. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Ron.
And so that probably means the energy committee, if this is still a topic they want to be involved in, that maybe mid-year, we would start pulling that group together if that could still be a focus. So stay tuned.
Like I said, you're here now.
Yeah, just, that's that's great news, Rod. So.
Thanks. Yeah, and apparently we're the only one that's been approved in the state. I know that some of the other CCA providers, there's been issues. And I, I, so anyway, it's a good sign.
Yeah, that's just so wonderful. Thanks so much. And so for other municipalities, like, say, Caroline, we should stay tuned, right?
Right, right. Probably mid-year, I'll start reaching out to at least let people know what other stuffs the city and the town have to go through that you all could start following, whoever might be interested in joining TGen early next year.
Great. Thank you.
Other comments or questions for Rob? Okay, transportation.
Think it was easy because not much has changed since our December report. He had his new winter spring schedule, not much adjustment in roots. And I probably have more reports in March, but it's pretty much as it's been. Ridership is not what it was pre-pandemic, but it is getting some improvement over last year, and that's a positive sign.
Okay. Comments, questions for Bob? All right. Well, thank you, Bob. Next meeting agenda items. I have on my list, following up on the logistics of the EPA's final ruling on the lead water service implementation. Straw poll on nine one one. Addressing after Mark, if you're going to reach out to Mike.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Any other items that anyone knows they want to have included at this point?
Hey, Rorden, I think Bob is, I I saw something posted on the meeting, an additional resolution.
You know what?
About the the County Industrial Development Agency. I think that's what Bob has his hand up about.
Yes, let me just pull this.
When there was a late file resolution that I authored regarding resolutions supporting expanded membership for the board of directors, Tompkins County Department Agency, did all of you get that?
Yes.
And I'd like to move that sometime that's convenient, but it fits within the agenda.
Well, no one objects. I'm happy to have you introduce it now and and move it if you'd like.
I wanted to, wanted to talk about that because it's something that came up. It started last November with the Ithaca Board of Education. They proposed to add a, what would be an eighth member to the the current seven member Industrial Development Agency Board of Directors. Right now, there are three county representatives on that, three county legislators. One representative of organized labor, one representative put forward by Ithaca area economic development. There's one at large member generally drawn from the city of Ithaca. I may have mentioned there is one representative of organized labor on there. And that makes seven members. There are two at large members. One is generally a city owner person and the other is chosen at the discretion of the legislature. And what the Ithaca Board of Education proposed was that we think we should have a seat at the table. They did one time, but then they forwarded that maybe a year or so ago. And then they wanted back because they think that boards of education should have input in the decision-making process on tax curbs, file agreements and that sort of thing. And then they went to a committee of the county legislature, which met, I believe, on the Fourth of December. And at that meeting, it was suggested, well, if we added one more member of the IDA board, why don't we add a second one? And legislator Dan Corbin suggested, why don't representatives of the rural municipalities find a seat at the This all requires state legislation, unfortunately. The Tompkins County Legislature can't do it on its own. It would require whole legislation from the state. It was discussed at that committee meeting in December that they would want to get the ball rolling, assuming it's February, to get a proposal for the state senate and assembly so that they might act on it this year. The committee Housing and Economic Development Committee, which Greg Messi chaired, is had thought about taking it up in January. As it is, there won't be a resolution on this topic before the committee before permitting the firm works, or it could get acted by the full legislature in February. And our Enfield Town Board on the eighth of January supported a resolution which would add these two extra members to the board of directors for the IDA. One representing school districts and the other representing rural municipalities. And he recommended that TCOG take it up. And so the resolution is on your desks. And I would very much appreciate TCOG's endorsement. And I will move it now.
We have a second on this motion presented to it, or we have a motion on this resolution presented to us. Do we have a second?
One second.
Mark with the second discussion. Thoughts, comments, questions? It's like a hand in the back of the legislative chambers. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm I'm just curious as to, I don't know, why, why the city's representation currently is an at-large member drawn generally from the city. It it can be an older person, which doesn't have to be. I guess I'm wondering why for the rural representative an at-large representative from from the towns. It instead specifies as a member of one of the boards.
I suppose the county legislature could fashion their requirements so that they might be additional at-large members. Maybe the county legislature could say, we intend one of the at-large members to remain represented by the city of Ithaca and another at-large member represented by the school districts, any school district in the Tompkins County, and another one representing the rural municipalities. Again, these things can be fashioned and wordsmithed in a particular way, but our tradition as a town recently is, the city is always guaranteed a seat. And it's technically an at-large member, but it always seems to be, the city is is given a seat. And I believe by legislation that the legislature passed this week, there is a city representative remaining in one of those at-large positions. So it can be reworked if you wish, so that the city is more fairly need an at-large seat. But I think the rural municipalities should also be guaranteed an at-large seat if the IDA is expanded according to state policy.
But man, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just hoping we can ensure that we use the same mechanism for the city seat and and the county's seat.
It's a point of activity.
So what question do you have? Is it that you deserve the county and the state to vote?
The resolutions before TCOG is descended to the county, which is a good first step. We in Enfield decided we were going to send it to the state as well. But really, as I understand it, Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the county has to initiate it or the city really won't consider it. Is that correct?
That sounds correct to me, yeah.
Right.
So if the county is sending it to the state, if you're going to back my other way, can we say the same before you're not voting?
I suppose, although I think that the TCOG could come back again and endorse it. But I think right now, if we just put it before the county legislature, first go to the Housing and Economic Development Committee in February, then the county's a full legislature sometime, maybe the second meeting in February, and then on to alternating to have a right in enabling legislation.
Other comments, questions?
I guess the only thing I would add is to the discussion that I've always said is we in the rural municipalities, and this builds on a comment we had earlier this afternoon in our discussion, we really feel that there are increasing number of solar projects that need pilot agreements. And we in the rural municipalities don't really have a seat at the table when it comes to giving these pilot agreements review. To call Chris John, who is one of the members of the IDA board. We don't want to have somebody from the municipalities just saying all the time, or yes, 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 yes. But we need a seat at the table to provide some meaningful indulgent review.
Joel.
It was Ronnie had his hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ronnie, I can't see that. Oh, you do have your hand up. I can't even see that on my screen. Go ahead, Ronnie.
I have some issues with this resolution. The first is, what is the description of rural? The second is, by increasing the number of representatives on the IDA, you introduce the issue of making quorum. You're increasing the number, you hit, so your quorum number also increases, and there could be times when quorum is not met. The other issue is, how will the rural representative be appointed from among the rural communities? And how long would their tenure be? There, this introduces a lot of ambiguity as far as which municipality, rural municipality will be voting for another municipality's solar, in this case, solar project. I I I have problems with increasing the number and the ambiguity of rural and and the appointment.
I prefer to gain the lineup this one because when members are appointed to the IDA, then generally the people apply to become a member of the IDA. And then the county considers them, and then the chair makes a recommendation and the legislature votes.
That is correct, but I think the question was, why would I would want to choose a municipality and why would one municipality have control over another? Is that kind of where you get that, Ron?
Yes, yeah, it's it's, you're going to run into conflicts of of interest between one municipality and another municipality if if they're, you know, rural.
That's an interesting question. And it could be resolved perhaps by the legislature or by the the evolution of this this process. We have to get the extra seats first. I don't know whether TCOG might make a recommendation or whether various people would apply to become members that be that rural representative. That's a question that has not been really answered. And it's a question that probably should be answered some, at some time in the process. We don't want to argue between municipalities, but I think that somehow maybe there could be informal agreement that, well, we like this person from Dryden, we like this person from Carolina, you're Danny. And that person should be our representative. I don't know. I I don't anticipate big competition. I guess sense that there'd be somebody probably sitting at the table. And and there'd be certain concerns, I hope.
Joel and then Mike Murphy.
My my question was fairly simple, which is to say, I somehow didn't see this. I it's it's neither on the agenda nor is it included in the meeting materials. Is this a separate communication that somehow I missed?
Yeah, Taylor sent it out yesterday, I believe.
Can we screen share some? Do you have some idea what it's?
Yeah, I might actually, and our next meeting isn't until March, I don't believe. I was actually going to suggest that to give everyone adequate time to review it, that we actually, after Mike makes his comment, that we actually bring this back for a larger discussion in March. I know that does extend the timeframe a little bit. But state legislation continues, continues most of the year, so. There it is shared on screen for you, Joel. Mike Murphy, did you want to, did you want to make your comment?
My comment basically is, it has major impact if we vote that. And I don't think we've involved enough knowledge of it or looking into it. So I'm opposed to, until we have more information on it, or that each individual has the ability to look into it. So I'm I agree with you. Let's postpone it to the next meeting and prepare more for more information. I know he's saying that, but what has been failing with the present one that we need to add to more? Are we having decisions that are bad against the school systems or against the rules? What is the motivation for changing something that's been working for a number of years? And I'm not opposed to change, but I'd I'd like to have a substantial reason why we should change it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Joel, go ahead.
In support of your comment, Rorden, the my understanding is that the legislature is very occupied with getting the budget. You know, responding to the getting the budget passed by. You know, responding to the getting the budget passed by April. And they wouldn't be turning their attention to sort of local, you know, other legislation until after that point anyway. Um so I don't think that delaying until March would be necessarily problematic.
Um Don Schuffer, you have your hand up?
I I am concerned about the vote waiting on this. Uh you have one person representing maybe a half a dozen school districts and and another person representing fifteen or twenty municipalities. Uh but I don't see that as as a fair balance.
Okay. Uh Joanne. Hand hand up, I mistake. Okay. Um so we do have a motion and a second on the table. I I I think there's a lot of um there's a lot of reason to consider postponing this discussion until March. Um so if if anyone agrees, you know, I would entertain a motion to table this conversation until our March meeting, when we can have time allocated for it in the agenda, and we can have a a lengthier conversation about it.
I will move the table until March.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Do we have a second?
Thanks, Bob. I'll second it.
Um all in favor of tabling this resolution until we can discuss it in depth in March, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Great. Um so back to next meeting agenda items, we just added one. Any uh anything else that we know we want to discuss in March, other than what we previously mentioned?
I I um, Rorden, I guess, uh maybe already have it on the list, um but the nine-one-one addressing, we're having a discussion. Okay.
Yeah, got that. Uh as soon as you hear back from Mike.
Yeah, great.
Other items? All right, hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Joel, do we have a second? Mark or Bob? Uh all in favor of adjournment for the evening, please say aye.
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 All right. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you soon.
Okay, thanks, everyone.